22nd Council of Colorado, would you please pledge allegiance in the honor of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda will be approval of the amendments from the November the 13th meeting.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the amendments as presented.
Senator?
It has been moved in second to approve the amendments from the November 13th meeting. Would the court please call a roll?
Driver?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Gillon?
Yes.
Law.
Yes.
Next item will be approval of the statement of the bill's payment in amount of $1,087,377. Eighty-seven. That's a odd way to say that. Eighty-seven. Eighty-seven me. I started to say sound. Excuse me. One day and eighteen.
I'll try and say it right.
Anyway.
As a motion, I'll make the motion. Paid a total bill to the amount of $1,087,377.28.
Very good. A wise gentleman. It has been moved in second to approve the statement of the bill's paid with the court. Please call a roll.
Driver?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Gillon?
Yes.
Law?
Yes.
I'll try not to do that again. That's going to make you nervous. I've never seen $1 million.
I've never sent a $1 million.
Next item will be comments or requests from the public. They're being done. The next item on the agenda will be conduct a public hearing to consider amending the funding year 2017 budget and take any necessary action subject to the hearing.
So Mayor, we'll need to open a public hearing, take any public comment, then close the public hearing, and then vote on the budget amendment. And if you like, after you open the public hearing, I will give a brief summary of the amendments.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to move into a public hearing on item number four on the agenda.
Senator?
It has been moved in second to open a public hearing to consider amending funding year 2017 budget. Would the court please call a roll?
Trevor?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Gillon?
Yes.
And I believe the government body votes on this just as you do on the general budget. So as you have before, you have six funds that we're recommending amendments to. None of these funds are, involve our general fund or our property taxes. I'll go through each of them briefly, and then if there are specific questions, we can answer those. The first one is a special events fund. This is a fund that we actually created in 2017. The purpose of that fund is to account for what goes on with our various festivals and special activities. That way, we can bring in when we get the sponsors, et cetera, into one fund and do our expenses out of there without interacting with our general fund. We do make a contribution to the city to that fund as part of that each year, as we used to with the Chamber Fund. So that's really, we had not budgeted any money in there at the time because we didn't know what it was going to be when we set the budget back in. The second one is cash bonds. Basically, this is a court function. We try to estimate that each year, but people can place a, you know, put a bond up to cash bond when they're dealing with municipal court issues. If they appear in court, if they're found not guilty, then they get their money back. The money may go towards their fines, or if they fail to appear, then obviously those monies go back to the court under the failure to appear statute. Again, we try to estimate that. It's really money in and money out, but we had more cash bond amounts in that fund than we had anticipated. Economic development, primarily the change in that fund had to do with the modification of the tip from the SED. Obviously, we didn't estimate those expenses. They were fully reimbursed by the developer, but they were the legal fees, et cetera, that happened after we created the tip fund in 2016. We followed 2017. They bought some additional property, came back, and basically, these are expenses associated with that. Special sales tax, primarily on the special sales tax, there was a couple of things. There was the new disc golf, foot golf course that's being installed as we speak, or was being installed today, probably not now, might be a little dark out there. We had the device for the fire EMS that we spoke about, and we used money that we had not specifically budgeted for street, the street program we did in 2017. Obviously, that fund is geared towards paying for street improvements. We did fund money to transfer to the debt service fund, which still is in that fund. Balance-wise, obviously, that's a fund that's self-supporting. It has plenty of balance in there to support all these. Solid ways. The biggest thing there is we did have a price increase mid-year. In 2016, we decided in 2017 not to adjust the rates at that time, but we have to account for the expenses, so the expenses went up from what we eventually had budgeted when we were in 2016 or beginning of 2017, resulting in rate increase. And then the last item on the special highway fund, we also used dollars there to pay for our street program. So we have about $125,000 between the special sales tax and between the special highway fund, both of which are specifically earmarked towards road and street improvements in the city. With that, we would take any questions and would answer those. Again, it does not involve any change in any of our fee schedules, and it does not impact the property tax rate or any collections of property taxes. So we would not adjust those items.
At this time, any questions from the public, they're welcome to ask those. Mr. Trump, do you have any?
Do we need to step forward, or can we just stand?
Come up to the podium and get your name and address. You got three minutes? Well, no, you don't. Never mind.
You think you know it all, right?
Yeah.
My name is Keith Reynolds. I live at 141 North 98th Street. My question is, some of the things we've been talking about here is involving road improvements.
I'm sorry. The questions you need to ask are specific to the public hearing and not to...
I thought we were asking about what they were saying so far as road improvements.
Well, no, we're not. We're discussing this budgetary item and not road improvements.
Okay.
Yeah. If you had had any questions about road improvements, that would have been in the public comments section instead of this, instead of this one.
So the first time you asked.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll come back and do that next time.
I'd be happy to meet with you after meeting, but thank you. I'd be happy to try and answer them for you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion after we've, oh, we're not there.
Any questions from the council?
The, yeah, just one. I'm not understanding the special events really.
Yes.
It says increase to $21,037. What increase from to how much?
Well, we didn't budget any. That fund had a zero budget, so we were effectively going from zero to $1,000.
And that was essentially because the Chamber used to collect all those funds.
Right. We used to pay the Chamber, and everything ran through the Chamber accounts. And then when we changed to take that and do it ourselves, and then we used to budget some money in the parks fund, which we still do, or like the festival, the fall family festival, we just consolidated all of it to a special fund because it makes the accounting basically easier, doesn't it? So we get more or less sponsorship.
You're here to show money in, money out.
Money in, money out, right. Because otherwise, we haven't put any sponsorships into the general fund under just general fund revenue, but the expenses come out of other places. So this way, you can see the money in and money out.
Now, it's in motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close public hearing and move back into regular sessions?
Second.
It has been moved in second to close the public hearing. Would the court please call a roll?
Driver?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Gillon?
Yes.
Law?
Yes.
Now, you may make a motion to approve.
Motion that we approve the budget amendment. Please, you're stated on the amendment certificate, filed in the year 2017.
Second.
It has been moved in second to, I'm not going to repeat that motion. Anyway, it was just approved, the amending the budget for funding year 2017. Would the court please call a roll?
Driver?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Gillon?
Yes.
Law?
Yes.
Next item. Yes.
We just note on for this afterwards, if you could come sign the official copy that we then file with the state on the budget amendment.
Thank you. Next item will be consider canceling the December the 26th, 2017 city council meeting.
Historically, we have not held that second meeting in December. We try to get all the business done that we can in the first meeting in December, so it tends to go a little bit longer on that meeting, and I would anticipate this year as well. As you note, the actual regular reading would fall on Tuesday to 26th because when a holiday falls, when your council meeting falls on an actual holiday, by ordinance, it moves to the next irregular business day. So it is our recommendation, and if we do not believe at this time there is any actions that will need to be taken at that second meeting in December, and therefore, it is certainly your call whether to have that meeting, but we generally bring that up this time of year so that if you wish to cancel it, we can make sure to notify the public that we will not be having a meeting on that day. Or if you prefer to have a meeting, why don't we have a meeting on that day?
Are there any items pertaining to the development Village South that could potentially slow us down if we do not have a meeting?
Not at this time. They've advised that they will probably be back in January for their amendments is the date that they told us, so we don't expect that. I will say, if for some reason something came up, we could still call this meeting. We would probably, if it's a scheduled meeting, I don't know after we cancel it, we would have to just recall it as a special meeting, which simply means we'd have to maintain the agenda to what's on the agenda and publish what we typically do with you.
Make a motion to cancel the December 26th city council meeting.
27.
Second. It has been moved in second to the December the 26th council meeting. Would the court please call a roll?
Driver?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Gillon?
Yes.
Law?
Yes.
You mind?
I just have two really, or two or three quick things. Number one, I hope everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving. I got on my lying scale this morning at the gym and continued to talk. Says I added weight. I don't believe I did, but it says I did. So the second thing is just a reminder, and I do know we're, it is Mayor, but we do have the Christmas lighting activity tomorrow evening at...
6:30.
That's what I thought, so just a reminder of that.
Thank you. I wanted to make that note.
Yeah, there you go. And I think we've been working on, or the disc golf, foot golf program was going in at the parks, so they've been working on that today, but it's been nice, so that's going. I know Tammy's not here, so just briefly on Public Works, we should be wrapping up on the 102nd Street, closing that project out. We have also done the testing on the new lift station, and it's working, and it's doing what it's supposed to do. Obviously, we've got, there's some testing on sewer lines on the development side that we have to finish and run some water through, things like that, but it's come out and done on startup and done all the things they need to do for that to kind of be closed out here by end of the year, which is our goal, so that we're finished with that project itself and accept it publicly. And then the last thing that I have, I know that the, Ms. Driver had inquired about speed humps, and so what I, it can be a fairly complicated thing, but so what I've provided to you this evening are basically four articles around the issue of speed humps, not a pro or con on them, but I think these articles do a pretty good job, and they come at it from different directions, as you would notice, but I think they do a pretty good job of summarizing some of the pros and cons about speed humps. Clearly, they, they impact traffic in the sense that they slow it down. Sometimes it diverse traffic, which could be good or bad, but I mean, they have that impact. You know, they talk about some of the downsides from maintenance. Obviously, you've got to maintain the cost of putting in, especially with snow plows, which I say speed humps versus bumps because speed bumps are generally very high, typically put them in a private parking lot, streets you use these speed humps. But there's just some, I think, some fairly good information in there. There's a good article that's from Iowa State, which they have a pretty strong engineering department there, and Texas A&amp;M, both of those do a lot of traffic engineering kind of things. And then kind of the last one is just from ITV, which is the Institute for Traffic Engineers, and they're kind of ones that evaluate and design these kind of things, that kind of talk about speed bumps, some of the potential impacts, pros and cons. And so I really wanted to get that to you. I think probably the bigger question would be, from a policy standpoint, is if you do one, I mean, what's, what's the basis that we're going to do? So if somebody else came along and requested, said, "Well, I want one on my street," you know, are we going to do it on residential streets? Are we going to have some process that the avenue require? You'll see, there's some designs in here, you know, you don't want to put them on steep grades for probably obvious reasons. You don't want high-speed roads, side-heat roads that are probably in excess of 30 or 35 miles an hour, again, for the obvious reasons, you know, signage and some of those things. So I just really wanted to get this to you, give you a chance to kind of look through it, and then we can address this, you know, after the first few years if you want to, whether we really want to pursue a policy. And I would say, some cities use them quite a bit, some don't. I think generally, cities probably, especially engineers and probably people who work in Public Works do, they have a cloud, probably things like that, will probably say, "No, I don't really want them." I've also made some inquiries about, you know, because it came up with this, you know, what are the, what are the liability issues? So if you don't do anything versus you put this speed hump in, if there was an accident or car damage or things, does it anyway impact our liabilities? I don't know the answer to that, but I thought these did a good job of just raising some questions, so I just wanted to get that to the whole council, and we can discuss it further. Council comments if needed. With that, I don't have anything further. You will notice that Chief Viti is not here. He is on vacation, and he has his, his trusty assistant here, who's faking his head, telling me he probably has nothing to say, but he's here, you know.
Is that correct?
I do not have a...
Okay.
Chief Viti, I mean, Chief, what am I throwing that back?
We are suspended. All vegetation burns except for the cemetery. It is not burning at all, so we will probably try to pick that back up in January, February time of mine. Community was low. The ground moisture content was low. All brush was broken, the park near here was low, and I cannot get the burn at light and state burn. So that's why you've not seen all of that get cleared out just yet. We are going to be back in the park starting next week, clearing out the trees along the walking trail that goes around through there, and we'll try to pick that back up as it dried out in front of it before the spring, fall hits and turns green. We have 10 families with a cram and cruiser. Boots are out, in locations now. We finished up the last interview this Saturday afternoon with families. So between now and December the 16th, we'll be kind of busy with that. We've got a shopping coming up. We've issued a couple of challenges. The teachers at school are doing a candy drive. They're a little wearing blue jeans one day. IRF is conducting a portion of a toy drive, and the same with Dollar General, so you will see that out and about in the community. And like I said, we've got 10 mobile communities here, or 10 mobile families that we have received notification from for the need verified, and they're picking out all of them.
Thank you, Chief. Dave, you don't need to...
Over. Okay. Is the grading completed on the 102nd Street?
I think they're going to come back in with some topsoil in the spring, but I think general grading is done, but maybe there's...
It's pretty rough.
There are, and they know that that's rough, but we noted that on our initial walk for, and they're going to have to come back. Probably it will be early springtime when they go to the permanent seeding. That's technically a temporary seeding that it takes, but we have noted that about the roughness of the grain, and they concur. So they have to bring some topsoil to finish that up.
I was hoping that wasn't the last...
Right.
This is such a pretty big challenge.
I know, especially the intersection, and the big clumps, and I know that.
The other thing too is, the house at the, on the 100th, and it's on the, be the south or the northeast corner, where it's pretty high, a pretty steep slope coming down off the house and in there. Couple was here and mentioned that it may be a challenge for them. The grass seed did not take on that hillside.
Are you talking about the 100th and 2nd and...
Richland or... Well, it's 100th and Kansas. That, the seed didn't take well, and there's some ruts that have been carved in there, and it's pretty rough.
At the far end, the far end of 100th Street? Is that where it is?
No, right there on the corner.
Oh, right on the corner. I had, yeah.
Right on the corner.
100th and Kansas, yes. You're right.
And so we really, I'd like to see us maybe bring some topsoil back in, fill up some of that, and do some, some dormant seeding so that it gets something nice and...
And we'll have to do, I mean, just, I mean, wait KDOT work, because that's a KDOT project. Once KDOT releases a project, they're done, they won't put any warranties on it, they won't hold, I mean, short of it being a material failure on those contract...
Most everybody else is fine, and the grading and everything, but that, that's a little steeper, and it's got rutted in the grass. There's areas of grass they can take it off.
So I do the one, I'll get with Tammy and we'll figure out later that.
Chief, thank you very much for your work on that. It's great to hear. This year, we're helping these 10 families.
Jason?
I've got a couple things tonight. First thing, Mr. Mayor, I would ask to see if it'd be appropriate to have staff look into an attorney general's opinion on if one municipality can tax another without providing benefit for those ones that were being taxed and referring to the EPU pilot taxes on the water. And my understanding that that, those tax monies that the Edversville residents are paying, those monies are going into the KCK portion of the budget and not the unified government's county portion of the budget. And so I don't believe there's any direct services being provided back to our citizens for those, those tax funds. Is that something that we can ask Mr. Duckers to research or someone to research for us? And ask for attorney general opinion?
Yeah, without asking, the rest of the council's crew on and all, we'll just make a, make a recommendation to Davis, we look into that.
Mine and I'll talk, but I want to do that.
Okay.
Jerking, so it's... Sure. That has been a question, I mean, it has been a question for years about the pilot, how it lies outside the city.
The answer that we got three or four years ago was pretty lousy.
I also have a prepared statement that I will be sharing with, with staff for the minutes for next meeting. I just wanted to, to put to the record a couple, a couple, a couple things as I'm winding up my time here on the council. Being a public servant has been an honor and a great experience to represent the citizens of Edversville as a councilman. This opportunity has been about paying it forward and making a difference in our community, using my skills, talents, and presence to serve in a selfless way. I have several people to thank, including current city council persons, previous city council persons, the planning commissioners, other board advisory members, the mayor, several great staff, and all of our city departments, and many citizens that ask questions, offer feedback, or simply express care about our community by showing up. Also, a great deal of thanks to my family, Rebecca, Rachel, and Jared, for supporting my ministry of service by their understanding of my absences from family activity and other events at times. My time will be filled, making a difference in new ways going forth, and they're helping provide, if any, new ideas for me in doing so. Reflecting on what we have accomplished over the last four years has given me peace that I'm leaving office at the end of December, with Edversville being in a better place now than we were in 2013. During our time together, we have started a high-quality EMS service that's dramatically reduced response time, stabilized, and controlled costs. Made it a priority to reinvest in roads on an annual budgeted basis throughout the city, although much more is needed. Brought sewer to the north end of our city to spur development, an area that's been talked about for many years, and we did so without the burden of a special tax district or our unrealistic debt. Partnered with our business community on many quality expansions and additions. Set a budget that will lower the city's property tax mill rate this next year to lower than the one I started in the office. Participated in many budget discussions with staff and helped make decisions over time, with the city in a stronger financial position, with a reasonable cash reserve. Supported the growth of a parks recreation program that is reaching new heights of participation and partnership. Set up multiple annual community events. We've grown to add amenities to our parks. Established roadside recycling as a new service with carts provided for recycling and trash, and expanded the capacity of our citywide community. begun transitioning the building of sewer to our city so we can retain maintenance dollars necessary to preserve the system and better plan for maintenance expenses. Experienced improved city communication with the addition of a digital newsletter, Hot Shot, updating our website, utilizing Facebook, and hosting meetings on YouTube. Welcome several new professionals and hired or promoted to fill vacancies who are working hard to make a difference. Celebrated public safety personnel for heroic acts, professional development accomplishments of all earned retirements. Supported the investments in many equipment purchases for Public Works, inspiring EMS to improve the quality of services offered. Provided raises to all senior staff who would like to operate at times. These are a few, a few points I'd just like to, to mention. Honestly, I could keep going, but it's been a great four-plus years in Edversville. Our city's work continues beyond elections. Next council is challenged to meet the needs of our community and work collaboratively with staff and citizens on many items, such as completing smart development agreements that offer significant wins for our citizens, otherwise we'd have to grow. Turning the best way forward to promote growth and development. Indicting a new road study that involves public discussions to make significant road and pedestrian infrastructure improvements in the future. Continuing to improve the visibility of our community due to close education, communication, and enforcement to protect the investment in our neighborhoods. Complete projects underway, such as the management of the sewer system, the implementation of the rear room crossing, flag zone, and study of city facilities necessary to properly house our staff, facilitate our work, get store equipment today into the future. Financial planning for capital replacements, sourcing additional investments for care and management of our cemetery, making the investments into additional compensation for all staff to remain competitive in the marketplace, with additional focus on hard-to-fill or high-turnover positions, reinvesting in older parts of town to re-green neighborhoods, and balancing a tax policy that will allow Edversville to compete on a regional basis. The good news is that the city, revenues are underwised, good operational budget planning has served us well, long-term debt is retiring in the near future. Smart development agreements, excellent leadership from the city staff, set the new council and our citizens up for great things to come, without the need to raise property taxes. We have a good story to tell Edversville, and need to welcome and encourage the involvement from our citizens to, in order to continue reaching new heights, and for the community to have hope for continuing improvements like these. Helping set Edversville hard and making it the jewel of Windup County, the place where people want to live and businesses want to operate, has been an honor. Thank you again for allowing me to be your councilman and offer my continued prayers and support for Edversville.
I'll be there.
Boy, forgot to follow that.
I picked a short meeting, Mr. Trump.
That is eloquent and well-spoken and well-said, and as a resident, citizen of Edversville for my entire life, it's been, it's been a honor having you serve on the city council record, and Edversville, I'd like to thank you for that.
Mark?
I'd like to thank you too, Jason. Extremely. Thank you again. Couple of things, Chief, do you have a date set, or is there going to be a breakfast served again this year when you're giving a...
Yes, ma'am. December 16th at 9:00 a.m. at IRF Distribution. I'll brief that next...
Oh, okay.
That's where this set locked in with IRF. We'll be there between 9:00. We have to be out by 11:00 due to a Chipotle meeting, so I'm one of the...
We have to be out by 11:00 due to a Chocolade meeting tomorrow, Monday, Tuesday, and we'll do number four today.
And I realized Tammy isn't here. I wondered if there was any updates on that post.
I don't have any. Yeah, she was not feeling well today, so, yeah.
Maybe next time.
I, I do know Carly has jumped in it with both feet.
But I wonder.
And so she's staying active, which you, that sometimes may result in telephone calls because when you, when you start getting active, then people, you know, especially if you haven't been active, it's a lot surprising, but I haven't heard of any specific, but it's just.
Maybe hopefully get one next time.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Jason, good job there. Very nice, counsel. Like Jason, informal, but, um, been nice working with you. Proud, proud to be up here with you. I'd like to have the police department look into how we can establish a trash pickup with the people that are sentenced with community service, and that they're not doing community service outside of our city, and so that we can get trash picked up within our city.
Just for clarity, just, or, sorry, just make sure I got right. So we, community service from wherever they may be serving, that is, they may be sentenced by Windup County Court, IRF Court, some court that they're, they're, they have to do community service hours as part of their, their thing, not necessarily just our court. I don't think we do a lot of community service cases, but.
Yeah. To make sure I'm right. And if we have that study, that number, maybe we can go off of last year's number and see how many hours were put out there.
Right.
But, but I think that we should be getting some portion of that towards our pickup in our city and not just it going elsewhere.
I think the key, and I know probably my, certainly will come back, you know, is to have a mechanism to manage those people. And I feel that's, that's part of the, somebody can say they came, and we need you to go here, make sure they get there and get back, so.
I'm quite confident that we can.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I give it in the right direction.
So I think we can do it all.
Right, yeah, I understand.
Good. That's all. Tomorrow night, 6:30. Jason, thank you very much for your service. We are.
Thank you.